Good morning, I'm Lisa Thunderberg. I'm currently the sitting board member in Subdistrict One. I've been on the board for two years. I'm running for reelection because I feel like I want to finish what I started. I'd like to get us back to a balanced budget. I'd like to help select the new leadership for the district. It really matters to me because I went to school here myself. My four children have gone or go to school here, and this is my home. And I think the schools are very important. I feel like I've done a good job on the board. I've worked hard, and I'd like the opportunity to continue.
My name's Adam Lopez, Subdistrict Two. I'm running unopposed, first time ever tried to run for something. So I will be on the board. I'm running for school board encouraged by my dad because he knows I care about the district. I did work for District 186 at Douglas Alternative School. I also bring the budget aspect to the board because I do that for a living. I work for country companies. So I look forward to working with the new board and moving it into a bright future.
I'm Susan White. I moved to Springfield in 2006 with my family, and we chose to live within the boundaries of 186. After looking at all of the schools in Sangamon County, I was impressed by the curriculum and the diversity offered by the Springfield Public Schools. My third year in Springfield, I decided to run for school board because I had a fire in my belly. I felt that we needed some change and we needed to improve in a number of areas. Number one, being the budget. I got upset because there was a lack of equipment in our lovely science labs. And so that is my mom impetus that got me to run four years ago. Things have dramatically changed in four years. When I was first elected, our biggest issue was facilities. Now our biggest issue is just making our payroll. And so I'd like to continue on the board so that I can finish the job that I've started.
My name is Gary Pierce. I'm running in Subdistrict Seven. I moved to Springfield in 2001. I've actually lived in central Illinois since 1994. I was brought here for employment. I worked for the school district from '09 up to December last year, 2012. And I worked as a substitute as well as an assignment. They put me into assignments, one as a study hall teacher at Southeast and one at Capital College Preparatory Academy as sort of like the assistant principal, but I was prep coordinator. I also worked at Douglas as a teacher assistant. Upon experiencing this, I saw a lot of different things, a lot of politics that I didn't agree with. And I have an interest because of the fact that I have two kids that attend public school. My daughter attends Southeast and my son goes to Jefferson Middle School. So I guess want to see some change, especially in education and so forth.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to meet you. My name's Tom Schaefer. I live over on the south side of town. I'm a product of the district. My father was a product of the district. His father was a product of the district. My two children are products of the district. My daughter currently attends Southeast with Mr. Pierce's child. I passed around my Pleasant Hill graduation cap and diploma. This is my seventh grade project from woodshop from George Washington Middle School. I also have my Lamphier diploma with me. I never left my hometown. I'm proud of my hometown. I like everybody in it. I like all the institutions in it. My father was a lineman for CWLP for his entire career, and my grandfather was a city policeman for 30 years of his career and as a detective sergeant. I'm a local kid. I like Springfield. I like it so much that I never left home. I got my college education here as well. I know its flaws. I know its strengths. Question?
You're almost out of time.
Thank you so very much. I watched the school district at its high water mark, I think when I attended, and I think we're in a very tumultuous period right now where we need a back-to-basics approach. I ran unsuccessfully 18 years ago, and I think the back-to-basics approach was right then and it's correct now.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the first question, maybe start with Adam. What do you see as the greatest need in the district and how do you intend to address it?
Well, there's a lot of needs in this district right now. I think the greatest need, we haven't really pointed out, is the graduation rate in the district right now. If you look at the report cards, it's about 60 percent statewide. It's about 82. Districts surrounding us are about, the lowest ones, 89 percent. The highest may be 92, 93. So we need to look at that. We have to also look at alternative way of educating kids. Every kid's not going to go to college. We have to find an alternative way to help out every child so they have opportunity when they graduate, they can go to a job, they can get a career if college is not their direction. So we need to really look at that.
Oh, I thought you were, you're asking us all the same question. I apologize.
We're just doing the same order, the way we're doing.
Okay. I think the greatest, the greatest need in District 186 is that we need to learn how to live within our means, that we need to allocate our scarce resources based on what benefits the greatest number of children. We're in tough fiscal times. We've had a reduction, dramatic reduction in state funding. We're about to be asked to extend our line of credit just so we can make our payroll. And in the fall, we're going to be asked to issue $10 million in working cash bonds, which we can't begin to repay until 2024. This bothers me. We have to, I agree with Mr. Lopez, that we need to ensure that our children are ready for college and/or career, whichever is the best fit. But we have to be able to live within our means, and that's important to me.
Of course, just like both of Ms. White and Mr. Lopez stated, the budget is the most pressing issue that we have to deal with right now. And again, we have to learn how to live within our means, as Ms. White just said. And making cuts will happen. We just have to look at where it's going to happen at. I've been saying, since I've been attending these forums, that we need to do a cost benefit analysis of all our programs. We need to look at them and see if they're really worth having. We need to reevaluate our teachers as well as our social workers and others in this school district. We also need to try to implement some of these programs that we have, like CCPA, CCPA into other schools. You know, this is most cost efficient if we could have this program available to all our parents and to all our students. It's just, it doesn't make sense to have it just in one school, and especially if it's not cost efficient. So we need to try to do that.
Most importantly, we need a board that can make a decision. These are lean, tough times. We need a leaner and cleaner school district. We need a back-to-basics approach to education fiscally, leadership-wise. We need to quit making excuses for failure. We need to have somebody that can be a cheerleader, that can be a drill sergeant, that can be a conciliator, that can be a bridge builder. And we need it quick. We've put off stuff way too long. We've spent down to the nubbins. We have no more left in the till. There are tough times ahead. We need someone who can tell it like it is, including hiring a superintendent that will carry out our direct wishes. Let me repeat that, our direct wishes, and will answer a straight question with a straight answer. We cannot rely anymore on platitudes, on cliches, or what I call education doublespeak. The time has come to push the no button when required. The time has come to stop making excuses. And I believe also, harshly, the time has come when a student that absolutely refuses to learn with a defiance disorder, we're not, we're going to quit spending money on because it's bankrupting our district to do so. And that's the type of leadership that I would bring to the board.
Getting to go last is sometimes not a good thing. I would say the budget is clearly one of our priorities right now, also selecting new leadership for the district. We're at the, at an opportunity point, selecting a new leader to lead us both fiscally and educationally forward for the next several years. And I think that's a real crucial decision. It's probably the most important decision that this board, the new board, will make. And we need a leader who can come in with a budget plan to help us navigate through the tough financial times ahead. We need a leader who can come in with an educational plan, who can help move all of our students, all of them, towards achievement and their goals in life.
I think we'll start with Susan. Third question. We'd like to know how you, how will you balance the needs of your subdistrict with the needs of the district as a whole, at large?
That's actually an easy question for me because while I think that it's a good thing that we're elected by subdistrict, which gives an opportunity for all people in town to have a voice on the board, I don't think that we serve as aldermen. I believe that we serve all of the children in the district. That's what a board does. And I don't base any of my decisions on what is best for my subdistrict. I base all of my decisions on what I believe is best for the district as a whole.
I guess I've been blessed with a good subdistrict. Subdistrict Seven has a mix from what my observing of walking the district. The subdistrict, I'm seeing trailers, I'm seeing apartments, I'm seeing nice homes, I'm seeing middle-class homes, I'm seeing low-income homes. So I have a very diverse district. And basically, what I'm going to do, once I'm elected, is I'm going to form a committee to where I can talk to people in my district to see what they want and put them on this committee from representative of all, the diversity in that subdistrict, and see what they want me to bring to the board. The board is about governance, and we have to understand that we're governing as a body, not as a single person. So we have to think about all the people, not only in our subdistricts, but throughout all of Springfield. And yes, you have some on the west side that may be a little bit what you would call upper class, but we still have a little upper class on Subdistrict Seven. So, because you have a lot of people live on the lake and off the lake. So we will have to bring all of our thoughts together and understand one thing, that even though we are a subdistrict, we are a part of the school district, and we have to come together on that.
Well, when you elect Tom Schaefer, you get a total package. I got my resilience, my hard scrabble drive to succeed from the east side, where I was born and raised. I got my heart, my soul, my sense of decency from the good people of the north end when I went to Lamphier High School. I now live over by the Walbash curb. Mr. Pierce is exactly correct. We have a wonderful subdistrict. Cabbage Patch, Laketown, Southern View, decent, good, blue collar, hard-working people that expect, deserve, and demand an education for their children. That's what they'll get with Tom Schaefer on the board. You get the total package. You get somebody that understands all of Springfield, a local person who's been around, who's worked here, who's lived here, who was educated here, who knows the strengths and weaknesses of this district, including my subdistrict. I am adverse to this, to this opinion that there's one school is special and another school is not. All the schools in our district are equally important, are equally vital. I will not play this game of we're better than you or you're worse than us. I saw it played on the east side, and I will not play it as a board member.
Your question was how do you balance the needs of the subdistrict versus the district as a whole? I, I believe, and having only been on the board two years, I believe that it's important when you are elected from your subdistrict, once you're on the board, you're a part of the seven. And I think you make the best decisions that you can with the information that you have available to you benefiting the most children across the district, particularly in our budget situation. I don't think you can look at it as, from your own perspective of your own subdistrict, I think you have to look at decisions across the board for all children, all teachers, and all of our families.
I'm in Subdistrict Two, which is about the north end of Springfield, and I will be the voice of that subdistrict. I think a lot of parents, families, taxpayers are concerned with my subdistrict, with the cuts that happened. I have a lot of kids in my subdistrict that went to CCPA, and I voiced my opinion that I will work hard for those people to get that school back, back up and running for next year. So I think we have to look at our subdistricts, because those are the people that do put us on the board, but we have to bring those ideas from each subdistrict to the board and work together.
All right, let me, one of the big, the big challenge of the next board, one of the big things is hiring a new superintendent. And we'd like to know how you believe the board should work with the superintendent? And we'll start with Gary.
Well, first of all, the superintendent has to have the vision of the board. And as I stated before, the next superintendent does not necessarily have to be done with a nationwide search. We can find good talent within the state of Illinois and as far as Missouri. That's as far as I'm willing to go with the, if I'm elected to the board, two states, Missouri and Illinois. We have been paying, I feel, way too much for our superintendent. I think we need to look at that, take a look at that, and maybe find a way of reducing that salary, especially if that superintendent has other responsibilities besides taking care of the district. Now, if you're going to have a big, what I call cabinet, then we also should look at that. If we're going to, if he's going to take on more responsibilities, then we'll pay him for those responsibilities. But if he's going to have a big cabinet, then we have to make a reduction somewhere so it either have to be with the salary or with the cabinet. But I think that we basically have to have a superintendent that has our vision, the board's vision, not one board member, not one more member.
Well, we learned from the last superintendent some pluses and minuses with hiring and paying a superintendent. Reagan was a president with a guy and a vision who I trusted. He said, trust but verify. And we delegate a tremendous amount of our power to the superintendent. He is the day-to-day operational manager of this district. Everything from when to close on a snow day, which just happened recently, to possible school closures, to hiring a budget guy that I have to trust intimately with the budget figures that he gives me. That being said, I want somebody that's experienced. I want somebody that's knowledgeable. I don't want somebody to have a learning curve. I want them to have been stressed so that I know that they're proven under fire because our district is facing some tough times and some tough choices. I want somebody that I can speak with as clearly as I'm speaking to you, that will answer a straight question with a straight answer. If I ask about truancy, if I ask about dropout rate, if I ask about test scores and trends, I want a straight answer to a straight question. And I'm going to trust him or her to do what we say and our policies, but I'm going to verify everything that I'm told and everything that they say. Thank you so very much for that opportunity.
I think one of the most important aspects of the board superintendent relationship is communication, open, free communication both ways. I think it's not necessarily a bad thing when eight people don't all agree on the same thing, but I think working cooperatively with good communication is key to that, to the success of that relationship. I hope as we move forward that, with a search, that the community is involved in that process and helps us identify other qualities that the community would like to see in our educational leader for the next several years. But for me, it comes down to good communication and working honestly and openly together.
You can look at the board right now and the superintendent, there's a lack of communication. I think as a new board member and the board, we have to work with the superintendent. It's kind of like a relationship. You know, you have to work together if you want to achieve a goal, and that's one thing every board member that's elected is going to have to work together, work with the superintendent, because that's the way we're going to get things done. And right now, things aren't getting done. We need to involve the community in the search for the next superintendent and hopefully brings ideas to the table and superintendent reaches out to the community, out to the subdistrict so we can look and work towards our goal.
I, I got, was elected to the board four years ago. I wasn't, I, when the current superintendent was hired, I wasn't on the board. And when I, shortly before I was elected, the current superintendent had, had a contract extension, a five-year contract extension. So when I arrived on the board, there was already a bit of a fractured relationship among some board members and the superintendent. I think we have an opportunity with a new board, with some who have experience with a previous superintendent, and some who will be coming on fresh, to work together, to pick somebody that everyone feels comfortable with, that everyone has input in, into the selection of, and that we can also have feedback from people who've been watching from the outside. When you're on the board, it's kind of hard to see the forest for the trees sometimes because you get so caught up in the day-to-day decision-making. I'd like an educational leader, someone with management experience for a large school district, and I think I'm out of time. I'm sorry.
The next question has to do with the achievement gap. District 186 grows more diverse each year, and the majority of the district's minority students are considered by the district and the state to be from low-income households. The achievement gap between black and white students specifically, as recorded by the State Board of Education, has only slightly lessened since 2004, which would indicate that, you know, the academic achievement issues the district has may lie in one demographic. And educational experts agree that to actually close such an achievement gap, you have to allocate more resources to it. How do you propose to do that specifically in light of the recent cuts and the cuts that you guys are going to have to make next year? Start with Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. The achievement gap is an ongoing, intractable problem. My dad was a lineman and had four children in a small house on a small salary, but he demanded excellence in our education. And he was unhappy if he did not receive such excellence. Unfortunately, so he received excellence. We need to get back to that. We have a lot of families, unfortunately, that do not stress education in their child's life. In fact, the opposite is true. Some of them have a destructive lifestyle and say, if you don't want to go to school, don't go. That kills our truancy rate and our funding. They have some of them that don't take education seriously, and we have kids that have a defiance disorder. They say, well, I'm not obeying my parent, I'm not obeying my teacher, I'm not obeying my principal, and I'm not obeying the police or the judge. Turns into a real disorder. How we reach these people is going to be one of my greatest challenges as a board member. They sink our test scores, they sink our graduation rate, they skyrocket our truancy rate. They genuinely have a defiance towards education. I'll never understand it, but I'm going to work every day of my board tenure to fight that defiance disorder in those children that refuse to learn. And I'm going to make sure that we break through that.
Obviously, I'm not an educator. I'm, I'm a lawyer, and I didn't go to school to do education. So I'm going to give you the mom, school board member of two years answer. It is absolutely a challenge with our resources. We, as we move forward over the next couple of years, we'll need to find approximately six more million dollars to cut in our already lean budget. And we're at the point of cutting good programs, things that are working. Last year, we cut reading teachers, which fell very heavily on our non-title schools who couldn't make that change up. What I do think, we are seeing some very promising growth in our elementary schools. Growth, not, not meeting and exceeding, but growth, and I think that's something we need to focus on. I think also, we're seeing the schools and teachers taking on more of a role in the community. When I looked at our new school at Matheny Withrow, they have a community room, and one of the things they're working on are things like Mr. Schaefer was talking about, parent education, bringing the parents in, offering educational opportunities, making school a good place. I think those are some of the things we're going to have to continue to work on.
With our resources, we don't have any money, so we're going to have to reach out to the community. I'm personally hoping to reach out to volunteers to get involved with schools. I'm part of the Big Brother, Big Sister program, so I do mentor a child in District 186. So I think we can bring volunteers in the district. I hope every board member will volunteer, Big Brother, Big Sister, and mentor once a week at a school. I think that would be big. But on a note here, we do have a problem with education in this district, and I don't know if the board members know this, but there's a high school here in Springfield that about 150, 200 freshmen will not be sophomores into this year. That's a big problem. So I'm not going to say that.
Why would that not be public?
Well, you can find out. Well, that was, that was told to me. I'm, that's given fact. I mean, that's, we have a high school in here in town that's only graduating less than 200 kids when they started with over 400 kids freshman year. I mean, that's a problem. I mean, and that's, we haven't heard about that at all.
We, we have a problem with the achievement gap, and when you add that to our fiscal, our fiscal issues, it's, it's really, it's a perfect storm because we have to educate all of the students in our community. We need a public school system. We're the, we're the capital of our state. We need an excellent public school system. And yet, with our current funding issues, it's getting harder every day. My goal has been to keep programs that benefit the greatest number of children. That's been my focus. We, I didn't vote to cut post-secondary coaches. Those three, those three positions at all three high schools raise millions of dollars worth of scholarship aid. I didn't vote to cut librarians because it affects every elementary school student. And I just think we have to keep prioritizing our money toward the greatest good.
You speak of the achievement gap, you're talking about 50%, 50% of our students reading at grade level, 50%. And then you talk about 400-plus students starting off their freshman year in high school and only 100-plus graduating their senior year. This is a problem, and we need to, what we need to do is, we need to reform education. We need to get teachers to teach according to the strengths and weaknesses of our children. We need to find teachers, we need to find ways to fund teacher training. You know, they should, that should not have to come out of the teacher's pocket. We should have money put aside for them so they can get the training they need to teach our students. That's one thing I don't see here in District 186, and that's why I say we need to bring governance back to the board. There's no governance. And basically, if we want our kids to learn, then we have to make sure that they're in the proper environment. Every kid is capable of learning if they're put in the proper environment with the right teachers. And we need to look at the cost of bad teachers.
Erin, can I ask a follow-up question? Just to follow up, do you agree with allocating more resources to schools that are considered more low-income than others?
Yes.
I agree with it. However, I'm unable to do so in this fiscal climate. Well, rather, I would be a leader that demanded excellence with the resources that we have because the truth is, folks, we have no alternative. We must demand more while using less. We must quit making excuses. We have to get leaner and cleaner. We have to make demands. We have to have high expectations, and that's for everyone. Everybody had it tough at some point in their youth, as far as I'm concerned. I never grew up with anybody with a silver spoon in their mouth, but I saw people excel under great difficulty. They didn't make excuses, nor were excuses accepted. I think we've become a society that accepts excuses. I will not tolerate excuses. If I'm intolerant in anything, it's I am intolerant of failure.
For me, that's a complex question because I think inherently in our system, we do have some inequities because of the abilities of different schools to raise money through parent groups, forming community partnerships. I think in some ways, in the district right now, it's, it's every man for himself because I think the burden falls on the schools to try to get grants since we don't have a centralized grant person in the district anymore. So I'm not sure if I could sit here and say today that I would favor diverting money, allocating it in the way that you've suggested. I think we'd have to look at that whole picture of what other monies are coming into the schools and how, how the school's ability to raise money factors into that question.
Simple answer, yes. I'm not going to go on. I mean, it's just yes. We can make it happen. It's a matter of just doing it. I don't think I have to go and explain how to do it, just get the job done. So, yes.
My answer is we're already doing that to some extent. We, our low-income schools qualify for title money from the federal government. So those schools are already getting, getting extra money. If you're asking if I, is your question what I can give even more money than what we're, we're currently doing? Under our, under our fiscal reality right now, I don't know that we can.
I say yes, and I'm kind of like Mr. Lopez on this because I, you know, without much information, I can't really elaborate. But I will say this, observing the last board meeting, and I'm going to say this, there was a possibility of a high school, Southeast, getting a grant. And I don't know exactly what happened. I did ask a couple of the current board members about what actually happened, the reason that they didn't go ahead and get that grant, especially if you only have 400-plus freshmen starting and then you got 100-plus graduating. There's a problem. And it was a, I forgot the name of the grant. Can you help me out, Ms. White?
It's a SIG, it's a school improvement grant.
And if you can get money like that to make improvements in the schools, why not? Why not take it? Makes sense to me, especially when you're having budget problems.
Being a newspaper, of course, we're always concerned about sunlight and government. And so we wanted to ask, how transparent do you think the school board...
Sorry, you said a word that I did not hear. What? Sunlight? Thank you. Sunlight, okay.
So we would like to know how transparent should the school board be with the community and parents, and how do you do that? How do you be more open and transparent? How do you be more open and transparent?
All of our actions, any board action, has to be taken in public at our public meetings. That's where our discussions occur. We are very cognizant. We all have to do training on the Open Meetings Act. We're cognizant of our obligations there. And I believe that we have robust and full discussion at most of our meetings, most all of our public meetings, and I think that that's where our business happens.
Right now, I think there's a lot of secrets behind closed doors. I think you're going to see when I'm on the board, I'm going to be as open as possible. I'll have to ask a lawyer how much I can say to the media, but I'm trying to get the word out and keep absolutely no secrets from anybody. I know there's a small part with personnel you can't disclose on certain things, but there's way too many secrets. The taxpayers are paying, the teachers, you know, all the salaries are being paid by taxpayers. I mean, they have the right to know about everything on this school board. Of course, I'm not getting paid. So we need to be open with everybody. I mean, that's the problem right now with everybody so upset because no one knows until you guys publish it, and then you guys. So hoping to work good with you guys, so.
I'm well aware of sunshine laws. I represented a state board in Maryland, the Public Service Commission. And the current board follows all of the sunshine rules. We have some limited exceptions, and those are personnel, it's real estate, and contract negotiations. We're elected to a board to make decisions, and legally, Mr. Lopez, there are a number of things that can't be stated publicly because we're told on advice of council not to.
We might have to look at, from other lawyers, too, because I've heard different what can be said to the public.
So anyway, I believe that we are as transparent as we can be. I've heard that in the past, the board didn't discuss decisions during the open meetings. And I think our board, while it's been controversial, has done a very nice job of debating and thoroughly discussing lots of decisions. And I think that that's an important piece that has been for the better.
I believe that what we have to do is review our policies on that because I think there's a lot of things that the public needs to know. Now, there are some things I agree with that you cannot know because of legalities, and I trust that the attorneys know what they're talking about. Again, I would have to review the policies. I do think that since we're elected by the community, we have to let the community know what's going on. And some of those issues, such as personnel issues, especially when it comes to our superintendent, that should have been something that should have been discussed publicly. But other than that, without knowing actually the legalities of it, I still would be open for review and changing the policy.
Well, I've made a career on my cable access show of exposing the dirty little secrets of Springfield. I'm an open, public, blunt guy. Everybody, Americans have a strength, and I'll tell you right now what that strength is. We have flaws, but we work like the dickens to expose and correct those flaws. That's what's brought us forward as a young country so quickly, the strength of our leaders, of our citizens, to say, "This is wrong," and then fix it and make it better. It's called learning from your mistakes. It's called moving forward maturely, soberly, intelligently. It's what we need to do in this district. We certainly have flaws, and we will make mistakes in the future. But you don't dwell on them. You don't make excuses for them. You work mightily to correct them. That takes leadership. That takes a board, all the members, pulling together as a team with a superintendent who is on board and leads the coach in the right direction, and then you reach your goal. It's very simple. That's the strength that I would bring to this board.
Could I follow up? Particularly to Ms. White, I'm wondering because you're on the board now, but when you talk about sunshine, I think there was a negative taste left with the whole Milton deal, and then it comes out, and then it turns out there's an agreement, and there's a confidentiality agreement. Apparently, part of the agreement is to give him a good recommendation on the way out the door. So I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that a secret deal in which you're going to tell a lie because you're going to say how great he was when you're getting rid of him?
Mr. Schoenberg, I think you've, that's sort of a leading question, and so I have to be--
This is an editorial board--
I understand that. We, despite the confidentiality agreement, which is included in that separation agreement that I think most of you have seen, employers owe a duty of confidentiality to their employee.
What about the positive letter that is part of that deal?
If you also look at the separation agreement, there's a nondisparagement clause.
So you can't, so in other words, is that fair for a public body to make a deal like that?
On advice of council--
In secret?
That's the, on advice of council, that is, that is the agreement that six board members and the superintendent signed. It was a mutually agreed-to document. And we voted on it at a public meeting on March the 5th.
He's asking, is it fair? In your opinion, is it fair for a public body?
Fair to the voters, these people who you represent?
I think the way that, I think the way that this has been handled pursuant to advice of council is the appropriate direction, yes.
Obviously, this was part of a negotiated settlement. Both parties were represented by council, and we took action at our public meeting. And I think that that has been an appropriate resolution.
So in other words, if somebody calls you up and says, "How did the superintendent do?", you can't be honest if you think you did a bad job.
The superintendent is always free to release his personnel file, and then we could have a very frank and honest and open discussion.
But unless it's up to, you're saying it's up to him for you to be honest about it?
On advice of our district legal counsel, I don't practice employment law, but I assume that Mr. Cross does, on his advice, the, aside from the confidentiality agreement, the sitting board members are not allowed to talk about the superintendent's performance unless the superintendent chooses to make his personnel file open and public.
Well, you could have if you didn't reach this agreement, right?
I don't believe that's correct, no. That's the advice of our district legal counsel that advises all seven board members.
May I throw out one more comment? Mr. Schoenberg, we're not allowed to discuss the performance of any of our employees publicly without their permission. So just to follow up with what Mrs. Fundenberg said, at any time that the superintendent would like to make his personnel evaluations public, I would be happy to talk about those.
Kennedy said it best, victory has a thousand fathers, defeat is an orphan. So I totally understand everybody's position on this. The other cliche that I'll use is, I've seen a lot of superintendents in my time in this district, my education in this district, my upbringing in this city. There's a dynamic at work here. When a superintendent comes in, everybody throws flowers. When a superintendent goes out, everybody throws rocks. It's a dynamic that I've seen over and over, and I believe will be repeated, even with the superintendent that if I'm elected to the board, I would have a hand in selecting. It's an ugly dynamic that we're faced with. I think that I cannot criticize a previous board, just as I would hope that after my tenure on the board, I would not be criticized. I think everybody goes into stuff optimistic with a belief that everybody's trying to do the right thing here. Sometimes you get, sometimes you get your mind changed on that. And it's a tough thing to see, and it's a tough thing to sit through. And sometimes you make stuff in a contract, or you listen to legal advice that you look back maybe five, 10, 15 years later, and you think, "What the heck was I thinking there?" So that's a dynamic that's ongoing. We will, I'll struggle mightily as a board member to do the right thing with superintendent selection, with their contract, dealing with lawyers. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go over a minute just by a few hairs here, so give me a second. I had breakfast with Dr. Milton to get his view on what happened. And he, I mean, it's been brought to my attention that he was willing to be consultant for maybe rest of the year, possibly work free for rest of the year, get some money back. I don't know why those ideas were never brought out. After talking to Dr. Milton, like I said, I apologize for my reaction because I didn't know about the secret agreement and whatnot. I don't understand why we could have not, if he won, if that, if stuff I'm hearing is true, if he'd stay on until June 30th as a consultant, work for free, the way he was talking about, help out with the budget problems. I don't see what the problem is. I honestly don't know. So, and I, here to me, lawyers, I mean, there's a lot of lawyers, lawyer this, counsel this. I'm afraid, give me 30 seconds, I'm afraid I'm going to have to have a lawyer with me 24/7 on my own personal side because everybody's calling their lawyers. And I mean, we spend way too much, I mean, you could look, look at the legal fees in this district. We could have probably saved one of those schools.
Well, I have, I had no problem with Dr. Milton. As I said before, I was a substitute, and I was put on assignment, and he specifically asked me to work at CCPA. And I think he was doing a good job as far as trying to close the achievement gap, achievement gap in the district. But what I said before, and I'll say again, is that we have to review our current policies. And like Mr. Lopez, fortunately, I do have an attorney I have been seeking consultation with on different subjects. And basically, that's what we're going to have to do. We're just going to have to review our policies. The board is a public function, and we're elected by the public, and the public needs to know what's going on. And the way they handle that situation with the superintendent, I wasn't in agreement with that, but I wasn't on the board. So we just have to review the policies once we're elected.
If I may, we have time for maybe one or two follow-ups if we're still going to have closing statements from everyone. Additional questions?
Mr. Schaefer?
Please.
You are perhaps best known, and you mentioned your TV show that you ran all those years, The Shooting Sport.
Nineteen years.
Nineteen. And I know the "No More Gun Laws" sign was very famous at the Capitol, standing before it was popular. Just your view on gun rights, have any view of what should happen in schools for school safety? Because I don't know if you're exactly with the NRM and stuff, but that seems to be the issue that has driven much of your public policy debate over the years, and I just wonder how that would manifest itself in dealing with schools.
It's a great question. I chose a tough topic to get into. Firearms in our society is, has always been big. My dad was a Marine in the Korean War, so I grew up around with a sportsman's attitude. And I took it to my show, which was modeled after American sportsmen. I've seen the roller coaster ride of firearms, violence, crime, and I was surprised at our previous three debates that the issue of school security has never come up because it was sure red hot and smoking there for a couple of months.
Well, given your minute, what's your answer?
I have an insight as far as my lobbying activity and as far as the public's acceptance of the Second Amendment and laws in this matter, including the courts. It might not help my background, but I don't believe it would hurt anything. I think I've seen the high watermarks of, if you want to call it the gun rights struggle, I've seen the low watermarks. I've seen politicians come and go. I would say that it wouldn't hurt.
What wouldn't hurt? Are you talking about, do you want an armed guard at every school like Mr. Lepierre said?
I would love to have a school that is violence-free. How we reach that utopia, I have no clue. I know we can't afford to put an armed guard in every school. And if I tell you, people in the media, what our security measures are, you'll tell everybody. So I can't tell you because then my school's security is, goes up in smoke. And that's the whole thing about security is, we've got security, but I can't tell you what it is.
Aye.
And I'd like to make that clear on one last point. Security is an ephemeral thing. If you have, just like with the military, well, when are you invading? When is the invasion? See, if you tell that to the media, then your invasion fails. And if you tell your security plans, "We will have secure schools with Tom Schaefer on the school board, and it will be affordable and it will be fair." And I don't want to dominate the rest of the board, but I'll let everybody else weigh in, but I thank you very much for a very important question, Mr. Schoenberg.
If anybody else wants to weigh in--
I am.
Oh, aye. At a recent board meeting, I saluted Matheny Withrow School. It's the new school that we're building on the east side of town. And the architects, before Sandy Hook, the architects had already come up with a fantastic security plan. And the entire school is designed with security in mind. I also was at Owen Marsh School last week, and this summer, they're having the interior reconfigured to make that school safer. So I think our district is focused on safety, and we're working to improve in that area.
Well, thank you, everyone. And everyone but, Adam Lopez is opposed in this election. So I'll start with you on the closing statement. This is a chance for you to tell the voter why you should be on the new school board. And we'll start with you.
Well, I am running opposed. I will be on the board as long as I vote for myself. So I look forward to being on District 186's school board. I'm excited. I'm going to bring the energy. Like I told people before, it's kind of, there's no excitement, it's always kind of depression when the board meeting goes. So I'm going to actually try to get a positive feeling for the board, and it's going to be positive, positive, positive. And I'm going to bring, you know, I'm from District 186. You know, I graduated from Southeast High School. I played, I'm big in athletics. I played basketball, baseball at Southeast. I worked for District 186. I have a lot of friends, family that work in District 186. I want the district to be the best district around. We have to have that kind of business concept, is we're competing, this district's competing with all the districts around us. People want to see the other districts, so we have to make District 186 the best one. So vote for me.
I've worked extremely hard on the school board for the past four years. When I ran last time, I told the voters that I would treat my time on the board as a full-time job because I'm currently not employed outside the home, and I've done that. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to choose a new superintendent. We need a superintendent to focus on Springfield. We need the superintendent's, next superintendent's contract to preclude any outside consulting. We need a superintendent that has management experience for a large school district like District 186. And we need an educational leader, and I'm excited about that opportunity. We also need board members who can understand the fiscal reality. And I've spent four years, three of them following the Finance Committee in particular, and three years in a leadership role. And we've got to make the appropriate cuts, and we need to learn how to live within our means.
We're not really given enough time to really answer this question. But I will say this, I have a vested interest. You know, I have two children that attend Springfield School District 186. Prior to that, I used to be able to invest and send in my kids to a parochial school. I can't do that anymore. So, you know, some parents don't have that choice. I don't have that choice anymore because of my finances. But basically, what I want to bring to the board is peace. You know, I'm a man of God. You know, I'm not going to put that out there too much, but I am a minister, and I think that what I will bring to the board is diversity in that area, as well as being an African-American male. And I emphasize male because you don't see enough of us in positions on boards or city council or anything since I've been living here. You know, I moved here back in '01. I think there was one that was on the city council, and then I think there was one board member that was elected, and then I don't know what happened to him. But we need to have diversity, and that's what I'm bringing to the board.
This is closing statement, correct?
Yes.
I brought my high school diploma from Lampier High School. It's a high watermark of my life to have attended public schools in this city and in this school district. It's an experience that I've never forgotten. The best people, my lifelong friends, including my siblings, all the kids from my old neighborhood. It's been a joy in my life. I'm focused. I am a focused individual. I do it in my lobbying activity, I do it in my work, I do it in raising my family, and I would bring that talent and experience to the school board. This is my job, to put this diploma into the hands of every student that starts in this district. That's where Tom Schaefer comes from as a board member. We will not save everyone. I will never turn my back on a child who seeks an education, regardless of their problems, regardless of their difficulties. This is the goal, and it's a diploma that should have unquestioned merit and value. I call it worth its weight in gold because that's what I believe mine is, and that would be my goal as a board member in this district. Thank you very much.
I've been volunteering in the schools for 15 years, since my daughter, who's now a junior in college, was a first grader. I've done everything from sharpening first-grade pencils to being president of the Public Schools Foundation. The Public Schools Foundation raises money for all of our schools and touches every student and teacher in the district. And I've been proud of my record of service. I've been proud of my two years on the board. I've served on the Curriculum Council for two years, and I've been on the Finance Committee--
for just about a year now. I've worked hard, and I have made decisions which have made about half the community unhappy, but I stand behind those decisions. I bring fiscal responsibility to the board. We have to have a balanced budget if we want to continue to offer school for all children in the future, and that's important to me. This is my home, this is where I grew up, this is where I educated my children, and it means a lot to me, and I would appreciate your vote.